I would like to call the city council regular meeting of April 7, 2020 to order. Before we get started, clerk has asked me to read the following. For those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment. And when public comment is open during an agenda item discussion, you can also email request to speak to cityclerk@templicity.us. Do it now and state on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment on. Okay, with that, I will now call the meeting to order and Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Fish?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here.
Okay, kind of in keeping with tradition and, you know, in these times, I think it's kind of nice to keep things as we always have. I thought I would keep the invocation and the pledge of allegiance on the agenda, even though I know most of us don't have a flag sitting in front of us. But that's okay, there's a flag flying somewhere. And so tonight, I will go ahead and give the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. In future meetings, if any of you would like to volunteer, including staff and/or council, please let me know. And I would be glad to put that on the agenda for you. So I don't think we need to stand at this time unless you want. That's up to you, but I will begin with the invocation. Dear Lord, I pray that you guide us always, satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting, strengthen us as we make tough decisions. Father, please guide us so that this meeting can be productive, effective and decisive. Father, please watch over and keep safe our first responders, nurses and doctors. Keep our city staff and their families in your prayers. Keep us safe and healthy as we fight through these difficult times. In your name we pray, amen. Now, I'll drop me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic. Okay, great. That was fantastic. Thanks, guys.
Always looking for my.
Thank you. There you go. There's your flag. Good job. With one somewhere. Okay, so now we will move to our ceremonial matters. There are none tonight. Next item on the will be public comments not listed on the agenda. City council will now hear public comments regarding the items not listed on the agenda. First, I'd like to ask Madam City Clerk if there are any email requests to speak.
Mayor Chavez, I do not see any requests to speak from the email. And I do not see any callers other than staff and council member currently.
Okay, with that, then I will go ahead and close public comments. And we will now move to item seven, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve consent calendar.
Second?
Do you have a motion in a second? If there is no objection, we'll have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, well, now move on to item eight, public hearing. There is none, unfinished business, none, new business, none. And the next item 11, we'll move to an update from our city manager. Mr. Cook, I believe you have an update on the COVID-19 situation.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, members of the council. Yes, I'll try to be as concise as I can, but as complete as I can over a few minutes, if you can indulge me for just a little bit. So this emergency that you declared in the county and the state has declared, we have been monitoring with the county health department all related restrictions, declarations, and how they relate to both services and facilities throughout our entire system and throughout the city. As you know, the sheriff's department has increased its presence in all of its contract cities and unincorporated areas. That surge of activity started in mid-March and will continue throughout this event. Every Monday, Mr. Azumi and I participate in a conference call with the sheriff to get an update on their deployment and on their personnel. And as of today, the sheriff's department is fully staffed to be able to handle the level of service that exists under the existing contract that we have with them and with the surge of additional patrols throughout the city. Additionally, even though we don't check with them as quite often, I do check with our fire chief, Fire Chief Alay, as well, and they are in the same position in terms of service. There's no change in service with the fire department. If anybody's ever interested, there's an app called Pulse Point that you can download. It's Division Nine that we are part of Division of. You can actually look at the calls for service. And the calls for service are within a whole range of an area, but you can see the calls for service in Temple City. They've been pretty steady over the last couple of weeks. The sheriff's department is also doing checks for homebound individuals, which there's about less than 20 right now. But for any individual, or if you know someone, or members of the public know someone who is a homebound individual and just is by themselves and needs to be checked, the sheriff's department will do a check. It's not a check to deliver any goods or materials or medication. It is just a check to physically see that they're okay and make sure that if they do have some issues, they would try to assist them with services. So sheriff's department and fire department are at full capacity. They do have COVID-19 cases, both in the sheriff's department and in the fire department right now. But those COVID-19 cases are not impacting a level of service to the community.
Are those, I'm sorry, Brian, are those cases in Temple City stations or overall?
That I do not know. And so it's, but again, it's not impacting the either station in Temple City, the sheriff's station or the fire section, but I'm not sure if there's any in our individual stations.
And I believe both the fires department, actually overall the county, we're canceling all vacation times, so we're actually full staffed, including fire department and the sheriff's department as well.
Yeah, and you allows me to transition to also our public works team at the county of Los Angeles. So we participated in one conference call with the director of public works for the county of Los Angeles. And also too, as Mayor Protem Yu pointed out, all staff is working there as well. So street lights, our service calls, everything else is at full capacity at right manner. We have developed some backup plans in case there is a surge in the county system as well. But they do not anticipate full service at this time being impinged upon. So our county partners, public works, the sheriff's department and the fire department are all doing, they're doing an amazing job and we appreciate their partnership. Along those lines as well, another question that's come up recently is enforcement. The sheriff's department is reiterating again that they are going through a warning system related to enforcement of the safer at home order. There was a rumor in the community for a while that someone had been cited for a safer at home order violation in Temple City. That is not accurate. The sheriff's department is only at this point warning people. It can escalate with some businesses if they have not complied, but that is the directive of the sheriff's department. Other vital services that are still in place with no impingement upon or reduction in level of services, obviously, are our five water purveyors are doing a great job of providing safe, clean, fresh water to our community. Edison is also, Edison and the county of Los Angeles is also, public works department has also been giving some directives related to power shut offs. So Edison still has to provide a certain level of service and certain infrastructure upgrades that they feel as though are necessary to keep the integrity of the system in place. But overall, they're trying their best to reduce those levels of outages. We've had a few in Temple City in the last few weeks and most of them have lasted three hours. Sometimes they're not the full six to nine hours some of these jobs usually require. So we're doing well on that front. Also Athens with our trash service, our exclusive franchise hauler Athens still continues to provide the service at the same schedule that they have, two times a week plus bulky item pickup and all the other parts of the agreement they have in place with the city right now. They are doing their best to make sure that they are making sure that they are protecting their employees as well as serving the community with an absolutely essential service as well. So our main vital services remain. In terms of city hall, as you know, city hall, the city hall operator and parks operator are there Monday through Friday or taking calls, excuse me, Monday through Friday, eight to 5:00 p.m. Calls for service right now are truly are coming in at a pretty decent clip, not at the same clip they were before. But we are still prioritizing those calls for service to ensure that we are protecting the public and we are protecting the employees who are out in the community. The same goes for public community development. We are still operating.
We might find what type of call for service they are.
Sure, it's raining. Well, I'll give you an example for today. Today, there were some calls for service for flooding from the rains from the last couple of days. So some storm drains were a bit plugged up. And there were a few potholes that appeared as well, which we serviced and provided services for. A few street lights were out as well and a few parking lot street lights were out as well. So we did those kinds of calls for service. Essentially, what we do on a day-to-day basis, we're still doing. We're just making sure that we're not doing in an area where people may congregate more often, even though they're not supposed to. And just so making sure it's safe for the employees as well as the public. Calls for service in terms of tree trimming continue moving forward. And park maintenance as well, we have two bathrooms open, one at Temple City Park, one in Live Oak Park as well, being sanitized on a daily basis. Just a reminder to the community as well that our annual Easter celebration will not be taking place this year. So we ask the community not to congregate in the manner that they have in the past at Live Oak Park. We will be putting some additional signage out at Live Oak Park, too. We want people to, you know, enjoy what they can, but do it in consistent with the safer at home order and maintain social distancing. Community development is still moving forward on the code enforcement side. Our priorities are life safety issues, building and safety. Our inspector, Bill Reed, is still out. Planning, engineering and permitting is still going forward with online transactions. I've been able to provide you some reports on some of that activity as well, so that is all moving forward. The senior meal program transitioned three weeks ago, I believe, if it's not, it would be two weeks ago, to a delivery service. So our staff is providing our parks and part-time park staff is delivering meals to individuals out in the community and the surrounding area as well. Along the lines of where this event is going from a financial standpoint, Ms. Pagaras and I are communicating and we're getting, as we go along this event further and further, actually tomorrow, there'll be a conference call with CalPERS to talk about some of what they're viewing as some of the short-term impacts of this event and the fluctuation of the stock market because of this event. We will be monitoring that as well going forward. Lastly, on some, one project that I'll be providing some more information to you as well is right before we declared the emergency, we went out and accepted a bid award from All American Asphalt to do repaving of Las Tunas. Mr. Khyir and TransTech, and TransTech has been a really important partner with us as we continue to provide services to the community, has been working very aggressively with All American to find a way to expedite that project and making sure that we are following all social distancing practices and minimizing the impact to the community. Because of the fact that the safer at home order is out, it seems to be a good time to do some level of construction work in a safe, responsible manner that is consistent with the safer at home order. This will include probably a, this will include a level of nighttime work to help mitigate and try to make sure once this safer at home order is lifted, that we can try to make sure that we have completed this project as quickly as we can. So I've talked a lot. I just want to thank all of you and I want to thank staff for it being extremely responsive, participating and continuing to do work. Thank you to our sheriffs, our fire and our other first responders that we are now part of, our county public health department, health officials, and our grocery workers and our three major grocery stores in town. Just want to thank them all. Thank you all for persevering and continuing to stay strong through this event. So that's my report this evening, Mayor Chavez.
Okay, thank you. Does any of the council have any further questions for the cook?
I have one. How are we doing with the rains? I think there have been no issues. It's rained pretty hard the last couple of days.
Yeah, the staff does a very good job of knowing where our hotspots are. As I answered Mr. Mayor Protem's question earlier today, a couple of our callouts today have been related to the rains. So we have to be very careful. We do have a few homeless encampments near some rural tracks that we've had to be extremely careful about. And so that was, other than that, the rates have been pretty good.
Thank you. Okay. There are no further questions. We will now move to item number 12, update from our city attorney, Mr. Murphy. Do you have anything for us this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, first item, there have been reports, two different in the last two days that I've read about the future of housing bills in California. I know that's a subject of interest to a number of the council members. There were a couple that were introduced before all of the states of emergency came into play. Rather than report on those tonight, I just want to let you all know that the general theme that I'm seeing and what I'm reading is that it's very difficult for housing builders who do not have projects actually moving forward right now to secure financing. So a project that was entitled but had not broken ground is having a tough time getting financing. Doesn't mean that those projects won't move forward, but it may give more impetus to another series of bills from Senator Weiner and the like, the follow-ups to SB 50 that we all expected were coming. Second item, just related to the city's local emergency, as you know, it was for a limited period of time. So we're watching very carefully what the county's doing, what the state's doing, because we're going to have to bring back to you a second resolution following up and extending the state of local emergency. We don't want to extend it too long, but we also don't want to have to come back to you too many times. So we'll keep a very close eye on that and you can expect to see that at a regular meeting, most likely the first regular meeting in May. That's all I have tonight. Thanks.
I think Mayor Protem, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So to your first point that they, that our builders or developers may have a tougher time in securing financing, even though a project has been permitted or, if you will, entitled. Does it make sense for the city to look for perhaps a mechanism to allow some extension of these entitlements? Perhaps for a longer period of time so that they can get the financing in place?
It does. I think what we'll want to do is work, talk with Mr. Reamer's office about what might be possible and really about what, what projects might be at risk. But sir, I think it's a very good idea and I'll put it on my list of things to do tomorrow.
Alright, thank you.
Ben, I think that's a great idea, too. So if we could have staff look into that further, maybe report back at our next meeting.
Alright, thank you, Mr.
Okay, do we have any further questions of Mr. Murphy? Okay, here we now move on to item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. I'm not, I'm sure, I don't think anyone's had any of those meetings lately. Although we have, we did have our ad hoc meeting concerning the commissioner recruitment. Councilmember Fish, do you want to report out on that, what we had talked about, or you want me to say, or?
Well, I thought it was going to be actually listed on the, as an agenda.
Well, what we're going to do tonight is make a recommendation.
Oh, okay, okay.
Why don't you, if you don't mind stating what our recommendation be to council?
Sure. After talking with Mayor Chavez and looking over who was coming up for appointment, what we would like to do is just go ahead and reappoint the commissioners that are coming up, if that's okay with the rest of the council. I, I believe, but I'm not sure if the council got a list of all of those commissioners. But that would be our recommendation would just to go ahead and reappoint the commissioners for two additional years.
Okay, thank you. Just to kind of add on to that, you know, we looked at the list and as you know, we haven't gotten a whole lot of response lately for those positions. All of them are very experienced and, you know, I think that's probably what we need now more than ever. Also, there's the question of logistics and conducting interviews and things like that. We thought, just because of the uniqueness of what's going on right now, unless there's anybody, anybody has any strong objection to it, that's going to be our recommendation from the ad hoc committee. And that is to reappoint those who, and I believe, Madam Clerk, I think you had reached out to them. Had you, I can't remember, had you heard back from any who didn't want to be reappointed?
I did speak to every one of them and they're all willing to come back for another term.
Okay, so that was going to be part of the thinking as well, I think. You know, obviously, if one of them or more than one did not want to come back, then obviously we'd have to go out to, to interviews. But that's, that's our recommendation. Does anybody, anybody have anything that they want to add to that or any questions?
Mr. Mayor, so if to act on the ad hoc committee's recommendation, do we need to bring this matter back for vote or is that something that you as a mayor?
Yes, no, that'll be brought back, I believe. Brian, is that correct? Or who wants to answer?
Yes, that'll come back for a vote. I think the issue tonight is just if anyone had a major problem with it, then the ad hoc should be considered. But seeing no major problem, Brian and I can schedule that for one of our next two agendas.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else?
Question?
Yes.
Yeah, we, you know, as you, we know, we have the Front Rose Park development going on and we were very happy that the state had approved our grant. So, but we have not had a chance to meet, so I don't know if we can ask the, the, Mr. City Manager, what's our plan is to continue with this project?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protem Yu for bringing that up. So the earlier, late last week, I actually signed the grant documents, accepting the $2.9 million from the state. We have not heard from the state if they are going to extend the deadline in terms of completion. Mr. Matsumoto will be following up with the state to see what kind of extension. But for us, and from a planning standpoint, we are going to stay on track with that. We're working through the, with the design firm right now and we are going to convene a standing committee meeting with Mayor Protem Yu and Councilmember Mann to follow up on some next steps and then bring, and after that, talk to council as well. So plan is still moving forward as it, as it is. But we're, we're waiting for the state to see if, because depending on how things move forward, bidding documents and construction, and depending on how the construction environment is looking, that deadline may be a bit difficult to achieve, but we don't know just yet. But we're planning towards that deadline still as of right now.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I make a comment on that for, for Mr. Cook? Yeah, I see your point about the construction being an issue if it's not coinciding with the lifting of the stay-at-home orders and other things like that. But if, if I recall, there are still a number of planning and design-related items that can still be brought back and discussed both with the standing committee as well as can be discussed with full council at some point. So perhaps those are items we can plan for and still tackle while this is still going on.
And just to follow up, Greg, just for clarification, if, if, if members of an ad hoc committee wanted to meet that remotely and with a statement, we would have some kind of notice, but it could still be remotely as well? How is that going to work?
So Peggy, how do you normally give notice for ad hocks?
I don't post agendas for ad hocks. Council just schedule them and they meet them in council in the city hall. And those meetings are not open to the public.
Right, so then we would follow that same practice on an ad hoc. Now, on a standing committee, Peggy, do you post standing?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Well, this, this one is a standing committee, I believe.
So then you would, we would follow the exact same process that, that you follow, except it would be a go-to meeting like we're doing tonight.
Okay, so just keep that in mind, gentlemen. So if you want to do it, we can, we can go ahead and continue. Great. Okay. Anything else in that? Right, we will now move on to item number 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. And we'll start with Councilmember Sternquist.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a quick question. I received an email after we passed the ordinance, the moratorium, I'm sorry, about not evicting anyone. And I guess it's on the west side near Camilla Square. There's a mattress shop and a beauty salon. And I guess the gentleman from one of those businesses approached the landlord with a letter. And the response was, you, you just need to get out. So her question to me was, I told her that we're not the enforcement agency, but I think we should probably have a, like a phone number or something posted that tells people where they can go on our website if they do have a problem. And I don't know if we do. I haven't looked, but it just might be helpful to have that. I guess it, do they call, who do they call? The Housing or Department of Housing?
There is an FAQ on our website that helps people find the resources that they would need. You're correct, we aren't the enforcement arm, but it is on the FAQ that we have. And I'll be happy to send you a link to that, or you can send me the email for the individual who inquired and we can make sure that they have that information.
Okay, I'll send you the number, Brian, and you can call.
No problem.
Is that on, like where the ordinance is listed? Where is it on our website? Is it easy to find?
Yeah, it is. Yes, FAQ and other stuff that's on, it's on the website and it's tied into the main link that we have for everything, which is templecity.us backslash coronavirus as well. main link that we have for everything, which is templecity.us backslash coronavirus as well. So it's 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 visible for the people who are looking for it.
Okay, so they would need to go to the left side of the website and then they have to scroll down to find the coronavirus?
If you go to news and each 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 item has a news date and one of them is FAQs for ordinance prohibiting evictions.
Okay, so it's under news and I just want the public to be aware because sometimes people aren't really comfortable navigating through websites, so that it's very specific, it's easy for them to find.
Yeah, we've tried to, we've done, we've tried to do everything we can to consolidate all all information from reliable sources to templecity.us backslash coronavirus. So there's just one kind of one stop shop of everything you can get related to the event.
Okay, and
Also on our news release and on and on and on our social media.
Okay, and just a shout out to our residents today. I did have to leave for maybe five minutes and I not see anybody who was walking. They had masks on and, I mean, pretty much the downtown is what I expected it to be, just deserted. So I think that our city is doing a really good job with social distancing. I have seen that there have been quite a few cities who have made an ordinance to wear a face mask and I didn't know if we were going to look at that down the road. I guess right now it still is optional, even though it is part of the governor's recommendation. Is that correct, Greg?
Actually, the county, I believe the county health officer issued an order today that goes into effect on Friday.
Friday, you have to wear a mask when you're out in public?
When you're out in public, it does not have to be, in fact, it should not be medical mask. It can be anything that you might have at home. I'm using my son's scarf. I went and got bagels for the family yesterday and that was just fine. People are using handkerchiefs, any anything that covers the mouth. And the primary purpose for this is not to stop you from getting ill, it's to stop you from spreading anything that you might have. So by doing this or ordering this, we're asking everyone to be thinking about others, not thinking about oneself.
Okay, I think it's just important for our residents that today one of the few days that I did see that, but I just noticed from even, you know, looking on Facebook in the evening, there's a lot of people that are, you know, after twenty some days of being in your home and having a lot of people have kids at home, they're, they just don't want to inundate everybody with all that information. So whatever we can share that's new with the public like this, even on our face, our our government Facebook page would be really helpful that starting Friday, you need to have a mask when you're out in Temple City in public, or I guess anywhere, right in the county. Not just Temple, you all the cities.
We'll have some, we'll have something updated. We actually did a social media post recently. That was more of a feel good post about some volunteers and a volunteer in the community as well, but we'll, we'll, we've been, we've been active and we'll be, we'll be following up.
Okay, and just, other than that, I'm just ready to see everybody again soon in person.
Thank, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Mann?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. I don't have much. I just want to say how much I appreciate all the work that city staff is doing during this crazy times. I know it's really hard to suddenly change and adapt on the fly. If I work my day job at the county office going through probably similar challenges and struggles with trying to keep up with the minimum level services that we can and or in our case, we're trying to keep as as many of those services running as as possible, like a full fully operational city. So thank you, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for your leadership, for doing that and and of course, a shout out to all of our first responders and all the people working in the medical field, because I have a lot of friends and colleagues that that do work either hospitals as doctors, as RNs. It's it's crazy the stories that they have. It's crazy the hours that they have to work. And it's it's a harrowing experience to, you know, be right at the front lines and and see all the symptoms, all the tragedies that can befall families. It's affecting everybody. So and and I'm also very, very proud of our residents and our community who's who's shown simple acts of kindness, simple, simple acts of assistance and compassion to help everyone out, especially elderly neighbors or others who may not be able to go out and get food, get supplies. So I think even during these hard times, we see the best coming out of Temple City. And I think that's something we all can be really proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. For Fish?
I wanted to just remind our residents that even though city hall is closed, that we are answering the phones remotely. I think, I know by now they probably know already, but I did want them to know that there is somebody who will answer their questions or at least get back to them. And then I did have a question. I obviously have not been to city hall, but the sign on the door, does it have the phone number? Or does it just say that we're closed until further notice? The only reason I'm saying that is because some people might get there and then they they have to go look for the number. I just think it'd be a good, good idea if we have
No, no, I will have to ask staff.
I don't know. I don't know that either, just thinking about it. But I want to echo my colleagues, I want to thank our staff. You know, nobody can prepare for something like this. We have a lot of emergency plans. We think about earthquakes and of course, windstorms and floods and all these different things, but who would think that in 2020, we'd be going through something like this, which we've never gone through for before. We've never prepared for, we we have no no backup plan. We've done it on the fly and I have to say that we've done an excellent job. So I want also to thank staff, thank our city manager, thank my, our colleagues, our city attorney. You know, what we're going through is epic. It's historical and I couldn't be prouder of of all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. But I think when all this is over, we're all going to be due for a big group hug. What do you think?
Yes, I believe so. I think it's a party.
Yeah, there you go, group party. Okay.
Can I clarify two things that thanks to staff who's helping me in the background? Related to the mask order, the mask order was ordered by the city of Los Angeles. It has not been ordered by Dr. Ferrer of RLA County official yet. So until that time comes, that's when we'll follow up on that and the phone number is on the doors.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
And you and you know, as 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 Councilmember Sternquist mentioned earlier, I think if you go on about, I know I have seen, I would say nine, at least nine kind of people I see on the street now do have masks. I mean, they're following the rules, I know, and everyone you see has a mask on and hopefully that'll become the norm, at least for a while. So, okay, Mayor Potem Yu, you're up.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo what my fellow council member had said. First of all, thank you so much to the Mr. City Manager and his staff and and Mr. City Attorney for, you know, we, like Councilmember Fish was saying, we never really rehearsed this, but things are working out very well. I really appreciate seeing your daily update on the city and also daily, even though I work for the county, it's good to actually get Mr. Arizumi's link to county's report, because you know, I don't always get that directly. It's always good, especially the update on how Temple City is doing according to that report. So and secondly, I want to also echo what William, Councilmember Mann said. I really want to be thanked, express my appreciation for the first responders. Just like everybody else, we're hearing the poor stories from our friends and who who are in the healthcare industry and others. I've heard of friends who said goodbye to their family and live in an RV and and not coming back at least for one till this is over. It's all tough because healthcare workers doesn't mean that they are immune to catching this themselves. So I want to say I really appreciate what they have done.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to, yes, go ahead, Cindy.
I just wanted to ask really quickly, do we know what the impact is on our, the hospitals in our vicinity? Methodist and Huntington? Does anybody have an idea?
Councilmember Sternquist, so there is a regional city manager group that meets. The impact right now is actually pretty good. The capacity in the bed space, both at Methodist and Huntington Hospital, which are regional hospitals that service just not just the cities of Pasadena and Arcadia are in decent shape right now. They are planning for the surge though, as well as public information. Pasadena, city of Pasadena entered into a a contract with the convention center to provide several hundred beds for the surge that may be coming. Hopefully, they're they treat it as, my colleague, Mr. Marmel, said, they're treating it as an insurance policy. But right now, the capacity at our, at our hospitals that service Temple City residents are at this point in good shape, but they need to keep it that way. And that's why telemedicine and those types of things, staying out of the ER and those kind of things are really important. But at this point right now, this status is at an okay status.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just add to that, I think it's once again more important to to emphasize the social distancing, people keeping good health habits. And that's really what had contributed to be lesser of a crisis in Los Angeles County. That's why our hospitals and our healthcare friends are telling us, they're still, while they're very, very anxious, there's still capacity within the system and as long as people keep keeping good health and social habits in this type.
Thank you. Alright, well, I of course want to thank colleagues for your comments, your observations. I think it's very important, especially in today's world, that our city knows that we are thinking of them and that we care about them and all the things that we're doing certainly indicate that and all the great work that's being done not only by the council, but by the city staff. It's a joint effort. It's certainly one of teamwork at best. And again, I want to thank everybody for what they've done. There's just a couple of quick things I would like to share with all of you. First of all, as far as PIA is concerned, there has been some some changes on the executive committee. We've lost two of our executive committee members, President Morris and and Member Hoffmeyer, both did not run for reelection. So we have two new members on our executive committee and we also reshuffled the position. So Margaret Finley, I think many of you know from the city of Duarte, is now the president of our executive committee. And we have a vice president and actually, believe it or not, it's hard to believe, I am number three on the seniority list now at JPIA. So I have now the secretary of the executive committee. So it's funny how time flies, but now I wanted to share with you a couple of things. JPIA basically is working remotely. They're not working at the office, but they have established what they call a resource response team to funnel all information that gathered by any members, or any members have any questions. They have a resource page on their website for any further additional information. They've started webinars and they've carried out one webinar on our impact on workers' compensation. I'm sure staff has been up to date on those and they are going to roll out some more things online to help the members. And of course, if any, any members question, certainly they can call in. Those issues will be addressed. So kind of business as usual, but not as usual. So they're, they're, they're keeping things moving. Also, Brian mentioned earlier, the senior, senior meal delivery service that we're now doing. I had asked him about perhaps getting involved in that, maybe participating, maybe helping of our volunteers to do that. And hopefully we'll have some more information on that. I I throw that out to any other council members who would like to participate. I think it would be kind of cool for for some of our, our seniors to get their meals delivered by the city council and so if anybody wants to to help out with that, we'll have some more information hopefully by next week on that and put that out for everybody if they want to do it. I think that's about it. That's all I have to add. So we will now move on to item number sixteen. Additional public comments on item is not listed on the agenda. So again, I asked the city clerk if there were any email requests to speak.
Yes, Mayor, I do have one email public comment, just that the public would like council to know that they're doing a good job handling business in this usual time and staff as well. Face mask construction videos are available on YouTube. Many designs don't require sewing and that will get through, get through it and look forward to better days. Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Anyone else online or calling in at this point?
I do not have any callers, public callers.
Alright, thank you. So with that, I will close public comments and we are now ready to adjourn the meeting. I just want to remind everybody to, of course, to stay safe, stay healthy and keep doing what you're doing. You're all doing a great job and we'll get through it. Okay?
Happy Easter, everybody.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.